We're recording.
Thank you. Sun, um, let's do a, today is March 1st, 2022. This is our meeting on the Seattle City Council. It is 2:01. I'm Deborah Waris, President of the Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Mosqueda.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Salant. Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Councilmember Herbals. And Council President Juarez.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. If there's no objection, Councilmember Salant is excused from today's council meeting. And so we will move forward. So today, just briefly, colleagues, we have seven matters on today's agenda. And items number two and number six and seven. Item number two being presented by Councilmember Herbald. And items number six and seven, two resolutions being proposed by me. At some point, we will seek to suspend the rules to allow Ali Pinucci, AccuDirector of Central Staff, to address City Council, or if we have any questions of the council bill that Councilmember Herbald is putting forward, or the two resolutions that I will be putting forward. So I'm letting you give everybody a heads up now, so we all know that. Thank you. Today, we have two presentations. One presentation will be from Councilmember Herbald. And, I'm sorry, proclamation, I apologize. Honoring the extraordinary services and contributions of Virginia Garcia. Councilmember Herbald will first present the proclamation, and then I will open the floor from comments from our colleagues. After council comments, we will suspend the rules to allow Ms. Garcia to accept the proclamation and provide comments. Councilmember Herbald.
Thank you so much. Today, I'm presenting this proclamation to Virginia Garcia in recognition of her receiving Lifetime Achievement Award from the Association of Local Government Auditors. This Lifetime Achievement Award recognizes Virginia's work to uphold the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion within the profession of auditing with impacts on each the local, regional, and national levels. One example, within the Office of the City Auditor, Virginia Garcia led efforts to develop a process in form that ensures race and social justice issues are considered in audits. Other local government audit offices have adopted this process. Also of note, Virginia served as the inaugural chair of the Association of Local Government Auditors Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. One of her most significant roles and far-reaching was playing a leading effort, swaying U.S. Comptroller General to reinsert equity, one of the pillars of auditing, in the 2021 technical update of the government auditing standards. This is after it had been removed from the previous edition of the standards. These standards are followed government auditing entities throughout the United States and in other parts of the world. The Seattle City Council with the mayor, Currie, presents this proclamation to show our gratitude for Virginia's service and contributions to the city, as well as far beyond the city, far beyond our borders to other jurisdictions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments that any of our colleagues would like to share in response to Councilmember Herbald's proclamation? Okay, I'm not seeing any. If there's no objection, the council will be suspended to allow Ms. Garcia to accept the proclamation and provide remarks. There you are, Virginia. Welcome.
Oh, good afternoon. Thank you for this proclamation. I'd never imagined that I'd be recognized this way. As auditors, I believe it's our obligation, our responsibility to call out racial inequities and make recommendations to address them. Historically, in our profession, this has not been a part of our job. But with the city of Seattle and the City Council's lead, we've begun to change that, and I'm proud to be a part of that effort. But one does not do these things alone. I want to thank the inaugural members of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee at the Association of Local Government Auditors, especially Megan Ko of King County, Jamie Amos of Atlanta, Madison Rorsich of King County, I mean, I'm sorry, of Texas. I'd also like to mention Councilmember Sam Smith, who understood back in 1987 the importance of having different voices, experiences, and representation on Central Staff. A Latina's voice, and that was mine. May he continue to rest in peace. I also want to thank OCA colleagues, Councilmember Lisa Herbals, who I worked with for so many years, Councilmembers Mosqueda, Morales, Salant, and of course, Councilmember Juarez for being role models and forces of equity. You inspire me every day. Finally, I want to thank my family, and especially my dad, who turns 100 this year. Muchas gracias por este honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Councilmember Herbald, do you want to have any closing remarks before I make a few comments there, if our colleagues have any comments?
I say what a pleasure it's been to work with you, Virginia. You always, you know, as we've said, you ask the tough questions. And those tough questions are really integral to making sure that all voices are represented at the table. Those are the tough questions, are the tough questions about how our local government is making our city a more just place. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Thank you, Councilmember Herbald. I just want to share, Ms. Garcia, I actually know who you are, but I haven't think I've met you in real life. But I really want to thank you for recognizing and honoring Sam Smith. For those of us that have been in Seattle politics for years and know Councilmember Smith's dedication to this great city and his love for this great city and recognizing your talent. So thank you so much. All right. Oh, Councilmember Strauss has something to say. And Councilmember Nelson, okay?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Virginia. I just wanted to take this moment to uplift not only your work, also the difficulty in which audits can be performed. Finding that granular level detail, nuance, and then providing recommendations to be able to come to change how things are currently being done. It's not an easy task oftentimes. And you demonstrate this, Jane demonstrated it earlier today when presenting one of her audits. It's just amazing to get to work with such a dedicated team, such incredible intelligence, and just your specific ability, Virginia, to make systemic change, not only here in Seattle, but throughout the nation. I'm just so honored to get to raise you up today. Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss, Councilmember Nelson. And then I see Councilmember Mosqueda.
I was just going to note that Councilmember Strauss wanted to say something.
Oh, is that what you're gonna do? Oh, okay. So then, well, that makes it easy. Where's Councilmember Mosqueda? It's all you.
Thank you, Council President. Virginia, it's great to see you. I just, we had the chance to exchange some messages, so I just wanted to take this as a public opportunity to say felicidades y gracias por lo que hacen por nuestra comunidad. Thank you so much for everything that you do for our community. You are an inspiration and a lifetime achievement award. How wonderful to be able to celebrate with you and your family. Happy birthday to your dad as well. And I'm so happy that we have you in this city, and we've been able to benefit from all of the work that you've done. And I look forward to continuing to work with you and our community to continue to lift up all that you've done. But more importantly, we get to celebrate you at the national level, so congratulations on your lifetime achievement.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueda. And I see Councilmember Lewis has his hand up.
Thank you so much, Madam President. And Virginia, thank you so much for your service that has led to this great recognition. It's just another compliment. Councilmember Strauss referenced earlier, we had a presentation from the Office of the Auditor in Committee. It's just another compliment to the really critical work that this legislative branch office does and that you have been an instrumental part of, and really centers, you know, how much change it makes and how helpful it is for us on the council to get back the information when we do these performance audits. And I really appreciate Councilmember Herbald. You know, when I first saw the email about Virginia getting this critical award, I was like, man, we got to get together and do a proclamation. This is amazing. And of course, as always, Councilmember Herbald beat me to the punch on that. So thank you, Councilmember Herbald, for bringing this forward. And Virginia, thank you so much for your service. Really appreciate that we all get to benefit here from your diligence and the efficacy of the audits that you're able to turn around for the benefit of all of us.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. So with that, we will close this out. And again, thank you, Virginia Garcia, and thank you for being here today. Our second presentation is my proclamation. Let's see, Mr. Lawiki is here. So let me read the formal stuff first before I launch into the more personal stuff, Mr. Lawiki. I want to present a proclamation honoring the fans of Seattle's new NHL franchise, the Seattle Kraken, proclaiming March 2nd to be Seattle Kraken Day. Are there any comments from my colleagues? Okay, not yet. Wait, wait, I gotta, I gotta suspend the rule. Go ahead. Who had their hand up? We'll just go ahead. We'll do it this way. Go ahead. Councilmember, Councilmember Lewis, is that a new hand?
It is a new hand, Madam President. Do you want general comments on the proclamation now, or do you want us to wait until after the Lawiki presentation?
I wanted to wait until after the presentation, so then I can just say what I have to say and then open it up to y'all. How's that?
Great. Yeah, thank you.
And so that way, in the queue, we know that Councilmember Strauss was first. Can someone remind me of that? And Councilmember Lewis was second. And then we'll see where we go from there. So, hearing no objection, the council rules are suspended. And Mr. Lawiki, before I turn it over to you, I want to share something, what we've been working on in this proclamation. I'm sure you probably have a copy of it in front of you. I could go on and on about the history here, but I have a short comment, a short statement that we prepared. And as you know, we've worked together since 2018 now, I think, or 17, I can't remember. So let me get out this first to say what I think needs to be put on the record for the future and for the viewing public. When the NHL granted Seattle the expansion four years ago, it solidified our spot as a true sports city. The city of Seattle has welcomed the Kraken with open arms, evident in the 32,000 fans who placed season ticket deposits in a single 24-hour period. Much more than just a sports team, the Seattle Kraken has become a community partner, giving back over $2 million in charitable donations and emphasizing youth empowerment with thousands learning to skate for the first time at the Kraken Community Iceplex located in District 5. I want to add on a personal note, I got a phone call last week from the Aurora Commons, from the CEO Elizabeth Dahl, saying, oh my God, we just got a call from the Kraken, they're asking, how do we wire you some money? They don't get calls like that very often. So I want to thank you for that. And some of the other calls I got from some nonprofits saying, and you and your brother Tim, you do a lot of this, and you don't, you don't say a lot, you don't grandstand a lot, you don't speechify a lot. You just get stuff done, and I appreciate that. And so with that, I'm going to now hand it over to you. And Mr. Lawiki, you are now recognized to speak to this proclamation.
Thank you, Madam President. And I will keep it uncharacteristically short here, but, you know, dreams do come true. And today, there's not a lot of people in the office because it's a company holiday in honor of our fans. 32,000 fans stepped up and said, we believe. And that was, that was well before we had the arena deal done. It was well before we got the expansion franchise done. And the reason we named it a holiday is we never want to forget. We never want to forget that it was the fans, the fans that supported this team that gave life. And out of that support came a brand-new arena. And our community had wrestled with this issue for literally decades. An NBA team left. Events never came that should have come. And we won from not having an arena to what I think is the most beautiful arena in the land. And an arena that is so proud to call itself the Climate Pledge Arena Zero Carbon Facility, that is now being studied by venues all across the world on how they too can become a zero-carbon building. That arena then did give life to a team, and that team is now playing, and that team is only going to get better. And you keep the faith, because we have a plan. We're going to do it the right way, the methodical way. We're building through the draft, but we're so proud of that team, and our brand has become one of the best supported in all the sports. But other things happened. Now the Storm have a home, and the Storm have incredible economic viability going forward. And the Storm's viability going forward will affect all the other teams in the WNBA. Shows come to our building. Tonight, we have Bad Bunny. The most recorded streamed artist in the world is here in Seattle. He's playing mostly stadiums, but he wanted to come to Seattle, and he's playing our arena tonight. And many people will come into the arena, having never been there, realizing there's this beautiful historic roof, but a brand-new arena, and they're going to see Bad Bunny. It gave us a chance to do community, and that's why I came back to home to Seattle, was really to give back to community. And we have the privilege and pleasure of doing that every single day, not just in the arena, but here at our training center, our beautiful training center. And I'm going to just show you that every day, people come to this training center and have amazing experiences. We'll have a million people come through the doors of this training center at the end of our first year. And then the most exciting part, there's more to come. We haven't hit our high note. And it was largely through the support of this city council, where you took multiple leaps of faith. You believed in us, that the dream came true. So we're honored by this proclamation. We will never forget. This will be a standing company holiday, and we're just eternally grateful for all the support. So thank you.
Thank you, Todd. And before I hand it over to my colleagues, I want to make one comment. I still have in my office the shovel dated February 27th, 2020, when we broke ground for the Kraken Community Iceplex. And Councilmember Lewis, I believe, yesterday shared all the statistics with the WMB and the Priority Hire, so thank you, thank you. All right. So with that, I see we started with Councilmember Strauss.
Oh, thank you, Council President. I'll defer to Councilmember Lewis, since it's his district, and I'll go after him.
Okay. Well, actually, the Kraken Community is in District 5, so.
That's right, yeah.
Go ahead, Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Thank you, Councilmember Strauss, for letting me go first. I'll just be super brief, given our agenda. Really appreciated the presentation two weeks ago. This council could not be more proud of Climate Pledge Arena. We couldn't be more proud of the Seattle Kraken. It is a monumental step forward in the civic fabric of our community to have an NHL team. I'm here again after a century hiatus of the Seattle Metropolitans not being around. And really look forward to continuing to go to those Kraken games. I've been down to Climate Pledge three times and seen them play, and I intend to continue to do that and really look forward to the ongoing civic role that Climate Pledge will have. So thank you so much for being here and very proud to proclaim this new day and excited it'll be part of the ongoing traditions of the team. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. And now, Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Council President. And Todd, you'll have to forgive me, I have some prepared remarks, and you nailed half of them. I'll first start by saying, it looks like you've been shopping at eighth generation. That's a smart decision. That's right. I just have to say, you know, I was a staff member for Councilmember Bagshaw when a lot of this was coming together and coming to fruition. And it was just such a pleasure working with you and your team to revitalize a public space with no public funding. Seattle Center has really benefited from the investments you've made. And while this proclamation is about our Kraken fans, it's not just about hockey. It's about the all-ages and abilities accessibility that you created in the stadium. It's about revitalizing the monorail and providing KEXP additional space to have their message heard. And that vibrancy is reverberating throughout Seattle Center. It's also, as you said, about our most winningest team, the Storm, and what future potential could be housed within the stadium. And it's also about revitalizing Northgate. And when I was a kid, it was, I mean, it was the first indoor mall in the nation. And now it's the first mall that also has an iceplex in it. And this is just amazing. You've created a world-class facility while preserving the historic roof, giving Seattleites a place to gather, celebrate, and create community. I just want to take this moment to congratulate you on selling out your season tickets in record time. I will say and put in the plug that Ballard FC, the newest soccer, semi-pro soccer team in the city, was that close behind you for making that record. I think they had 48 hours for selling out their season tickets. So with that, thank you. Congratulations, Todd, and I'll see you at the game tomorrow. I don't know if I'll actually see you, but I'll be at the game.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Council, do I see anything from anyone else, any of my colleagues? No? So, Mr. Lawiki, would you like to end our comments here today, and then we'll move on to our agenda?
Just super appreciative, and you know, more to come is a big part of this, you know? And I'll leave that to people's imagination, but we haven't hit our high note. That high note is coming. But we now can dream all sorts of dreams here before we couldn't. So thanks so much for everyone's support, and I'll let you get about your business today. And thank you, Madam Herb.
Thank you, Todd. And you will see me, Councilmember Mosqueda, and Councilmember Morales tomorrow morning at 9:30, in which I challenged my colleagues to ice skating, so.
Oh my.
Oh, yeah.
I might come up with my own proclamation after that.
Take your bets now, folks. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. So with that, I believe we're done with presentations. Thank all of you for speaking and providing such great comments to the Kraken, for the Climate Pledge Arena, and for the community, or for the Kraken Community Iceplex. So I'm going to move down our agenda. So next, we're going to go to approval of the agenda. If there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing or seeing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Now, we are going to go to public comment, and I will read my standard statement, and then I will hand it over to the city clerk, who will moderate the general public comment period.
Excuse me, Councilmember, Council President? You forgot to the consent calendar section to vote on the consent calendar?
Did I?
Approval of the consent calendar.
I apologize. Where is it after I? Oh, there it is. Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you. That's why you're the expert and I'm not. I keep forgetting, and I actually have two calendars in front of me. Thank you. So we will now go to approval of the consent calendar. And so, let's see, are there any items council members would like to remove from today's consent calendar? Okay, hearing done, I move to adopt the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've had a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yeah.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosqueda?
Aye.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbals?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. So the consent calendar is adopted. Will the clerks please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? And we've already adopted the approval of the agenda, so I will slide right into public comment. Is that okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. Colleagues, at this time, we will open the remote public comment period for items on the City Council agenda, introduction and referral calendar, and the council's work program. It remains the strong intent of the City Council to have remote public comment regularly included on meeting agendas. However, as a reminder, the City Council reserves the right to end or eliminate those public comment periods at any point if we deem that the system is being abused or is no longer suitable for allowing our meetings to be conducted efficiently, effectively, and kindly. Madam Clerk, how many people do we have signed up today?
We have four signed up.
Okay, so we will just go ahead with the four speakers, and Madam Clerk, I'll go ahead and let you read the instructions.
Thank you. The public comment period for this meeting is up to 20 minutes, and each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they register to provide public comment on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number provided when registered and use the ID and passcode that was emailed upon confirmation. Please note, this is different from the general meeting listen line ID listed on the agenda. If you did not receive an email confirmation, please check your spam or junk mail folders. Once a speaker's name is called, staff will unmute the appropriate microphone, and an automatic prompt of you have been unmuted will be the speaker's cue that is their turn to speak, and then the speaker must press star six to begin speaking. Please begin speaking by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. Speakers will hear a chime when 10 seconds are left of the allotted time. Once you hear the chime, we ask that you begin to wrap up your public comment. If speakers do not end their comments at the end of the allotted time provided, the speaker's microphone will be muted to allow us to call in the next speaker. Once you have completed your public comment, we ask that you please disconnect from the line. And if you plan to continue this meeting, following this meeting, please do so via Seattle Channel or the listening options list on the agenda. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with our first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt of you have been unmuted. And our first speaker is Howard Gale, followed by David Haynes.
Good afternoon. Howard Gale with SeattleStop.org commenting on our failed police accountability system. This afternoon, you are formally adopting the Council 2022 Work Program. Page 44 of this program states that the council should, quote, "consider recommendations of the City Auditor's 2017 report on evaluating Seattle's new police oversight system," unquote. That 2017 report states that, quote, "any evaluation of Seattle's new police oversight system should be rigorous, reflective of the community, and adequately resourced, and evaluate whether elected officials are providing appropriate oversight." What is shocking here is the recognition that after five years, nothing remotely like this has been done, let alone planned. And because of that, we have allowed Seattle's police accountability partners to become cut off from the community, self-protective, and self-serving, as is revealed by the recent scandals. The OIG rubber stamping, shoddy OPA investigations of police investigating police, the OIG pushing out investigators who question investigative failures, while they retain investigators who fail to even investigate, the OIG, the OPA, and the CPC frantically clamping down on transparency and accountability, the CPC routinely ignoring the demands of the community, et cetera. Here is a simple metric for evaluation. The SPD has killed more people in the decade after they murdered John T. Williams than during the decade prior. While we hold up the memory of John T. Williams as a point on our moral compass, the homeless man in severe behavioral crisis, killed just weeks ago by the SPD, is entirely forgotten and stunningly remains unnamed and unremarked upon. What deep disrespect to the memory of John T. Williams, if the person whose murder by SPD started us on this 12-year journey, we find ourselves lost on a path of constant justification, leading us ever further away from the path of justice. We need to build through a Seattle initiative a police accountability system providing full community control. Go to SeattleStop.org to find out how. SeattleStop.org.
Our next speaker is David Haynes, followed by Alexander Stein, who is showing as not present.
Thank you, David Haynes, District 7. The only thing cracking is the rooftop. They violated the memorandum of understanding, and they should have torn down the whole thing to rebuild a 21st-century first-world-class arena. OBG hustled the city mayor council out of $100 million write-off and then used Seattle for a billion-dollar write-off. Anyway, it's totally unsafe to go anywhere near Third Avenue or the bus stops. The police are refusing to fight crime, partly because we have the worst police chief playing politricks with law-abiding community, always giving an excuse why they refuse to help. Remember way back how council colleagues bragged they could quell crime hotspots by throwing away environmental infrastructure and spending $1 million, breaking up one bus stop into three bus stops at Pine and Pike, only to see 100 criminals 20 minutes before the Sunday shootout? Remember when City Council called the government service provider to get the tent out of sight that was in the middle of the open drug market between Pine and Pike Street last Thursday? Why didn't City Council also call the police to arrest all the evil customs violating repeat offenders and find where the crack, meth, heroin supply is and have it shut down? Instead, three days later, more criminals accumulated to over 100, resulting in a death due to exempted-from-jail crimes against humanity listed misdemeanor based on the dollar amount. Perhaps City Council should resign from the public safety oversight. Also, I dare say, Virginia Garcia is proof that racist skin color qualifications result in inept employees at the city auditor, giving $800,000 to the wrong bank account that cheated Mary's place in shelter. They proved that we had corruption within the government, they never got fired. They just got more money from City Council's oversight, buying off a union of reelection apparatus that still needs an investigation of the six-figure salaries and the homeless that stops prioritizing criminals in it.
Our next speaker is Alexander Stein, followed by Bill Johnson, who is showing as not present.
My name's Alex Stein, and I really have a sad, you know, story. Exactly the same story that he said on Pike Street. They were out of the laundry detergent on CVS. I'm desperate, so I go on Pike Street. I see a bunch of guys, they're doing Fentanyl, they're doing crack, but they're also selling some Tide laundry detergent. It's a huge, like, you know, 64-ounce thing. So I would give the guy 20 bucks for it. It's usually like $40 worth of laundry detergent. I end up getting stabbed by some guy that was just, he called me the White Dragon. I end up having to go get tested for hepatitis and HIV. So it makes sense that the team is called the Seattle Kraken, because it also should be called the Seattle Kraken Fentanyl Addict, because everybody in downtown Seattle is literally high on crack or Fentanyl. And now that I might have hepatitis, and I'm scared to death, all because I tried to go get some laundry detergent, because the CVS- get some laundry detergent, because the CVS doesn't even sell it. So that's the hellscape that we're currently living in, where you can't even go to the store and buy laundry detergent. You have to buy it from a crackhead. And if you don't believe me, go to Andy Ngo's Instagram. He has videos of all this on his Instagram. He shows how it is an open-air drug market, where you can buy laundry detergent, deodorant, crack, fentanyl, mescaline, GHB, every single drug, acid, even marijuana. You can buy it all, and it's laced with all kinds of narcotics. So if you want to do drugs, Seattle would be a good place, but if you want to actually work and be a normal citizen and not get stabbed by some guy that, you know, looks like he's doing the vaccine, but really he's shooting up a spoon and needle, then why don't you come to Seattle? Because this place was once, you know, a beautiful town, has devolved into an absolute nightmare, and something out of an apocalyptic movie, where you see people that are zombies strung out on fentanyl, barely alive, and causing other people's lives to bring, bring other people's lives down to their misery because they're so cracked out on the fentanyl and on the methamphetamine. So please do something about it. I'm Primetime 99, Alex Stein. I appreciate it. If you guys would go look at my Instagram and look at my hospital bills, and you can see all this for yourself.
Our next speaker is Bill Johnson, who is showing as not present.
Okay.
And that's the end of the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we've reached the end of our list of registered speakers, so I am going to now close public comment and move on to committee reports. We have seven items in front of us today. Will the clerk please read the first one into the record?
Agenda item one, Council Bill 12270, relating to taxation delaying the effective date of the heating oil tax on heating oil service providers under Chapter 5.47 of the Seattle Municipal Code, and delaying the date of the Office of Sustainability and Environment's First Annual Heating Oil Tax Program Status Report.
Apologize for that. The camera was on. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to pass Council Bill 1201, wait, 270. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Morales, it's all your, all you, all you.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, you received a very helpful memo from our central staff member Yolanda Ho. But just in summary, we have twice now delayed the heating oil tax. So I want to, we have at least one new colleague, so just want to give a little bit of background. We did have a heating oil tax proposed. We delayed it twice. The idea here is that revenue from this heating oil tax would be used to support transition to heat pumps away from, from oil, particularly supporting low-income families and making that transition. Revenue would also provide important job training programs for workers who'd be adversely impacted by a shift away from fossil fuels, and would also provide some public education on reducing reliance on fossil fuels. I do want to thank the staff at the Office for Sustainability and the Environment. They've been doing a lot of hard work on these programs and on trying to help understand the best way for the city to move forward. And I don't want, I want to make sure folks understand that I'm very supportive of the programs themselves, but I have heard from families, in my district at least, who are very concerned about the expense of a heating oil conversion, worried that it would be cost prohibitive for them, even with the support that would be offered by this program. I know that the Office of Sustainability and the Environment folks see this as a tax on oil dealers and on just the notion of dirty oil, but the reality is that this would very likely get passed on to families. And so, the proposed delay would put a pause on some of the activities mentioned, but we do have Jumpstart Fund, Funds, the Jumpstart Spending Plan allocates 9% of tax proceeds for investments to advance Green New Deal initiatives. The Green New Deal Advisory Board was recently seated and is beginning its work. So when I spoke with OSCE and with the board advisor, the staff person who's the liaison, we indicated that the board, you know, this could be something that they include in their discussion and in their recommendations for the 2023 budget process. So again, I want to be clear, I'm not objecting to the program itself. I think it's important that we move Seattleites away from a reliance on fossil fuel to more efficient, sustainable heating and cooling. But I am asking for a pause on implementation of this tax, because it is a regressive tax, and we need an opportunity to find a different revenue source. So I'm happy to take questions, if there are any questions, but, but I do think that we need to make sure we have state and local systems set up to help those who can't afford this conversion and can't afford to pay the tax. And we aren't quite there yet, so I'm hoping for basically maintaining status quo while we give the Green New Deal Oversight Board an opportunity to study this and bring some recommendations to us.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Are there any questions for Councilmember Morales? All right. Not seeing any. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Muscada?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbald?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries, the bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation? So let's move on to item number two, Councilmember Herbald. But in a minute, clerk, can you please read that into the record?
Agenda item two, Council Bill 12272, relating to staffing shortages in the Community Safety Communication Center and the Seattle Police Department retroactively authorizing a one-month hiring bonus incentive program for hiring 911 dispatchers and police officers, and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts.
Thank you. I move to pass Council Bill 120272. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and let's move forward. Councilmember Herbald, this is yours. It's all you.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 120272 provides retroactive approval for $220,000 in bonuses for five police officers and 14 911 dispatchers who were hired during the month of January 2022. Last October, former mayor issued an emergency order to provide for hiring bonuses for officers and dispatchers. Council allowed that emergency order to go forward, but voted to modify the emergency order to limit the bonus program to the end of 2021. No funding was included in the 2022 budget. There were proposals for, for funding a bonus program, including one that I co-sponsored. Council adopted a request for a report marked, that would be due on March 1st, on a potential citywide bonus program, and voted to end the emergency order again at the end of 2021. I spoke to the mayor's office about this yesterday, and they are carefully examining this issue, and have let us know that we can expect to receive a report on a citywide program in mid-March. Back to the saga of the January extension, contrary to the council's action, just want to note that, for the public record, that the departments continued the bonuses after receiving a directive from the former mayor on December 30th, 6:00 PM, claiming that the council's action to limit the executive order was not effective. This is inaccurate, and the city attorney's office has noted that they provided no such advice, and we to this day do not know what former Mayor Durkin meant. When he wrote, "Based on consultations with legal counsel, it has been concluded that the City Council's action to limit the emergency order were not effective." I discovered in late January that these incentives were still being offered. I really sincerely appreciate that Seattle Police Department, with Chief Diaz's direction, invited Mayor Durkin's December directive just exactly as soon as I inquired about the continuation of the bonuses, and I thank the Herald administration immediately directing both departments to cease offering the bonuses just as soon as they found out about this. We are committed to working together to ensure the officers and dispatchers offered a bonus are provided with it, and this legislation is the result. I'm very grateful that the Herald Administration is taking a collaborative approach to governing. It is a relief to have a mayor and an administration that recognizes council supportee as we work to resolve them together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbald. Are there any comments or concerns before, if I do need to suspend the rules, which I don't see that happening yet, are there any comments or questions or concerns for Councilmember Herbald? Okay, I see none. So with that, I don't need to suspend the rules. Will the clerk please call the roll or the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Lewis?
Is there still a debate happening here?
Yeah, you came in a little late. Do you want to speak? You can.
I just wasn't quite sure if we were asking questions of central staff first.
Well, I was, I got to move to suspend the rules to do that, but I didn't see anyone raise their hand. Okay, now I got two. Okay, so do you have questions for Councilmember Herbald, or do you have questions for Ali Pinucci?
I have some questions for central staff, if I may.
Okay, so let me move to suspend the rules, so we can allow Ms. Pinucci to respond. If there's no objection, the council rules will be suspended to allow Ali Pinucci, Acting Director for Central Staff, to address any questions or concerns council, any council member may have. All right, see no objections. The rules are suspended. Go ahead, Councilmember Muscada.
Thank you very much, and I did see Councilmember Morales's hand up first before me. I'm happy to wait my turn as well, Council President. Uh, thank you very much, Councilmember Herbald, for the summary of this legislation. The, the important thing here, I think, to underscore is that this legislation is not something that was council-driven, right? This is us, council, trying to be responsive to a situation that's been forced upon this council yet again by the previous mayor. The mayor, former Mayor Durkin, who adopted an emergency order in October 29th of last year, offered the incentive bonuses as, as Councilmember Herbald noted, but I think what's important to note is that it's very clear that council had expressed that we would be voting to modify that ordinance on November 22nd. In addition to that, I want to just ask Ali Pinucci a question about the specific provisos that were placed not on the Community Safety Communication Center, but on the Seattle Police Department. Ali, can you please remind, excuse me, Deputy Director, Pinucci, could you please remind me about how the letter that was sent on December 31st by the mayor violates what the council had put in place regarding provisos on Seattle Police Department spending?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President Juarez, Chair Muscada, council members. The, I don't have the letter in front of me, but in general, when the council adopted the 2022 budget, they also adopted a resolution modifying the emergency order that former Mayor Durkin had issued authorizing the hiring incentives. The modification to that emergency order only provided authorization to provide hiring incentives to SPD officers as well as CSCC dispatchers through the end of 2021, and the assumption was that they would use 2021 salary savings to cover those costs. It did not provide any authorization to offer hiring incentives beyond that date. In addition, the budget adoption ordinance imposed a proviso on SPD's 2022 budget prohibiting the use or the spending of any salary savings that they might achieve in 2022 on any, for any purpose, without authorization from the council. So what that means is there was a budget provided for the assumed staffing plan for SPD for 2022. Any sort of delay in hiring or not filling positions results in some salary savings. SPD does not have authorization to spend any of those salary savings unless specific authority is provided by the council. So that means when Mayor, former Mayor Durkin issued a letter to the Seattle Police Department and the Community Safety and Communication Center, directing them to continue with the hiring incentives, it was both in violation of the emergency order that the council had modified, as well as the proviso, because there was no budget authority for SPD to provide those, the payments of hiring incentives. In it, so, so in this bill, what it does is it says that it provides retroactive authority only for those offers made in January of 2022, and allows, provides the authority to spend $50,000 of SPD's salary savings to make those payments. The CSCC does not need that same authority, because the council did not restrict the use of salary savings. So as long as they are generally using the funds consistent with the intent of the budget summary level that those funds were appropriated to, the CSCC can just make the payments where SPD needed authority from the council.
Thank you, Ms. Pinucci. Councilor Morales or Muscada, do you have any follow-up before I go to Councilmember Morales?
Well, I did have one follow-up, if I may, Madam President. You know, when I looked at this legislation, and again, I want to, I want to note the unfortunate situation that we're in. I don't think it's fair to the employees who've been offered employment or a hiring bonus, and it's not fair to this council, who was very clear about our intent, both related to policy and the specific provisions placed on the provisos within Seattle Police Department. And I'm thankful to those who've accepted employment offers and want to serve as public servants to the city of Seattle, but wanted to be clear that we had provisions in place expressly, trying to have a policy conversation around hiring bonuses for this year that Councilmember Herbald had noted, and also budgetarily had it, intentionally had a proviso that was in scope, intending to really keep an eye on SPD's funding. So as we look at Seattle Police Department specifically, and recognizing that's only about $50,000 of the total amount here, I did ask central staff if it was possible to amend the legislation to recoup the specific amount that is being offered for individuals to SPD from the author of that letter, being the former mayor. Ali, is it correct that the existing title does not allow for me to make that type of amendment in this ordinance here today?
So did you have a question of Ms. Pinucci, or are those your general comments in regards to?
No, that last sentence was a question, Deputy Director. Pinucci, is that correct, that I cannot amend today's legislation, given the current title?
That is correct. The title doesn't account for that scenario, and we would need to do additional work to understand if that is legislatively possible to do.
Thank you very much. That's my questions, Council President.
Okay, good. Thank you. Councilmember Morales?
Thank you, Council President. I, I think Councilmember Muscada's points covered what I wanted to ask. I just want to state that I look forward to working with the mayor who understands and respects the separation of powers, and brings some management experience to the executive branch. Thank you.
Okay, so now that we have suspended the rules, allow council members to ask questions of the Acting Director, Ali Pinucci. Are there any other general comments before I call, ask the clerk to call the roll, or the vote? Oh, Councilmember Muscada?
Thank you very much. Again, I want to thank Chair of Finance, excuse me, Vice Chair of Finance, Chair of Public Safety for the work that she's doing here, and the Senior Deputy Mayor, along with the Herald Administration, for quickly calling attention and a stop to this practice. Echo Councilmember Morales's sentiment of the importance of equally important but separate branches of government working together on these issues moving forward. I will continue, colleagues, to see what we can do to look for other ways to recoup the expenses specific to SPD, but in this legislation, it doesn't sound like it's possible to do that. I do think it's an, the factors that led us to this decision today are really unacceptable, and look forward to addressing those with you, colleagues, and the current mayor in a different venue. Not supportive of how we got here, but due to the position that we're in, I will be supporting this in this moment, but we'll be looking forward to having greater reconciliation on both the finances and the policy that led us here after today.
Councilmember Herbald, is there anything else you want to add before we go to the vote?
Covered it.
Okay, thank you. So will the clerk please call roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Muscada?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries. The bill passes. The chair will sign it. And will the clerk please affix my signature to the bill? Let's move on to item number three for Councilmember Nelson. Madam Clerk, will you please read item number three into the record?
Agenda item three, Resolution 32043, declaring the intention of the City Council to hold a public hearing relating to the, to changing the assessment rate for the Seattle Tourism Improvement Area.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to adopt Resolution 32043. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, Councilwoman Nelson?
Thank you very much, Council President. So the Seattle Tourism Improvement Area was established by council in 2011 to help promote leisure tourism within STIA's boundaries, which is the downtown core and waterfront. STI rate players are hotels with more than 60 rooms and the current rate is $2 per occupied room night. STIA's Ratepayer Advisory Board voted in January 2022 to approve an increase in the assessment rate to $4 per occupied room night. To change assessment rates of a BIA, RCW 35 dot 87A requires that council first adopt a resolution that states the city's intention to change the rate, describes the proposed change, and sets the date and location for a public hearing on the proposal at least 15 days in advance of the hearing. So that's what Resolution 32043 does. The RCW also requires that the public hearing resolution be published in the Daily Journal of Commerce and mailed to all potential rate payers at least 10 days prior to the hearing. The legislation that would effectuate the proposed assessment rate change, CB 120273, will be discussed in the March 9th Economic Development, Technology and City Light Committee meeting. The public hearing is scheduled for the following meeting on March 23rd for possible vote on that date. So that's the legislative process that we've got before us and that's what Resolution, um, 32043 actually does. As to the merits of the increase in the rate from $2 to $4 per occupied room night, this has the full support of the community, including the STIA membership and the hospitality industry that gets business from hotel guests. So, you know, Seattle hotels have fallen behind our neighboring cities in their ability to market themselves to visitors. Whereas STIA has, has had the same flat rate since, uh, 2011, over 10 years. Portland's rate, for example, is 2% of the room rate. So as room prices increase, so does their marketing revenue. So this rate increase is one means to help our hotels recover from the pandemic and support the revitalization of our downtown core. And adoption of this resolution is the first step in that process. And are there any questions?
Are there any questions of Councilmember Nelson? Thank you. And I look forward to that because I know I'm the vice chair on your committee. So thank you, Councilmember Nelson. I don't see any questions or comments and no one's raising their hand. So with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosqueta?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries. The bill passes. And Madam Clerk, will you, uh, the chair will sign it. And Madam Clerk, will you please affix my signature to the resolution? Thank you. All right, let's move on to item number four. I see this is Councilmember Strauss. So Madam Clerk, will you please read item four into the record?
Report of the Land Use Committee, Agenda Item Four, Clerk File 314441, Application of Wallace Properties Park at Northgate LLC for a contract rezon of a site located at 10735 Roosevelt Way Northeast. The committee recommends that the clerk file be granted as conditioned.
Madam Clerk, my understanding is that, um, I just handed over to Councilmember Strauss. I don't move it. There's nothing to move. Clerk file?
I, I believe so. Amelia, can you confirm, please?
That's correct, Council President Juarez. Councilmember Strauss will provide the committee report and the recommendation from the committee.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Strauss?
Uh, thank you, Council President. Clerk File 31441, as you mentioned, is the application for a contract rezon of 10735 Roosevelt Way Northeast from LR3M to MR with a M1 suffix. This is an application for a contract rezon of two parcels located at 10735 and 10713 Roosevelt Way Northeast in Great D5 and the Northgate Urban Center from Low Rise 3 with the M mandatory housing affordability designation to Mid Rise with a higher M1 mandatory housing affordability designation. The two parcels are adjacent to the Beaver Pond Natural Area on Thornton Creek, which includes an environmentally critical, multiple environmentally critical areas. The sites are about 5.25 acres in total. Unlike most contract rezon applications we see, this application does not include a concurrent master use permit application. We did see this once before, uh, in the last few months with another location on 35th Northeast, if I recall correctly. This means that, uh, future development of the site will still require a master use permit application and all of the associated reviews at all permanent desks. This, there was one appeal filed to the SEPA decision for this application, which was dismissed by the Hearing Examiner. The Hearing Examiner recommended approval of the application with several conditions, which are contained in the clerk file. One condition was that the developer sign an environmentally critical area covenant restricting the future development within the riparian management area on site. As you heard me mention yesterday, I would only bring this contract rezon forward if that agreement had been finalized. And Kittle Freeman of Council Central Staff has confirmed we received the signed and finalized agreement, which should be, which is reflected in Legistar and he sent out to all legislative, uh, to all council members earlier today. Additional conditions recommended by the Hearing Examiner include that the future development will comply with the MHA, uh, with MHA by building affordable units on site and that future development on the north side will provide a pedestrian connection, a public pedestrian connection between Roosevelt Way and 8th Avenue. Thank you, Council President. That is the committee report on the clerk file. Up next will be the council bill that is associated and that is the item which I believe you have to move.
Well, thank you for that, Councilmember Strauss, before we get to item number five. So with item number four in the clerk file, are there any comments, um, for Councilmember Strauss? All right, not seeing any. Will the clerk please call the roll on granting the clerk file as conditioned or as explained by Councilmember Strauss?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosqueta?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The clerk file is granted as conditioned and the chair will sign the findings, conclusions, and the decision of the City Council. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the findings, conclusions, and decision of the City Council on my behalf? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving to item number five, it's Councilmember Strauss again. Madam Clerk, will you please read item five into the record?
Agenda item five, Council Bill 12275, relating to land use and zoning, amending chapter 23.32 of the Seattle Municipal Code at page 16 of the official land use map to rezon two parcels. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Strauss, Chair of the Committee, you are recognized. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, uh, Council Bill 120275 is the associated council bill with the clerk file we just discussed. So this is the corresponding council bill for the contract rezon we just approved. It effectuates the rezon of these two parcels. As you, uh, as usually occurs when we approve contract rezons, we will have to amend the council bill to add the executed property use and development agreement, uh, in part to ensure that the record does reflect the protections, the covenants for the environmentally critical areas. With that, I move to amend Council Bill 120275 Exhibit B by substituting the unexecuted property use and development agreement with the executed property use and development agreement.
Second. Can I do that? Okay, so, uh, Councilmember Strauss moved it, uh, Council President seconded. Are there any comments on the substitute? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So we will move forward. Will the, um, clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the substitute to Exhibit B?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosqueta?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
So the motion carries and the substitute is adopted and the amended bill is now before council. Are there any further comments on the amended bill? All right, I do not see any. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the amended bill?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosqueta?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes as amended and the chair will sign it. And will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Thank you. So, um, we have adoption of other resolutions on our agenda and item number six is mine. So Madam Clerk, will you please read number six into the record?
Agenda item six, Resolution 32045, adopting statements of legislative intent for the 2022 adopted budget and 2022 through 2027 adopted capital improvement program.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution 32045. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. As sponsor of the resolution, I will address this item and then I'll open the floor to comments. This resolution formally adopts the statement of legislative intent, which we call SLICE, the City Council approved during its review of the 2022 proposed budget and the 2022 to 2027 proposed capital improvement program, also known as the CIP. The SLICE reflects the council's policies intent as it applies to the 2022 adopted budget and the 2022 dash 2027 adopted capital improvement program. Yes. Okay, so, um, SLICE committee assignments and due dates are reviewed by central staff at the beginning of each calendar year. Any changes are reflected in Attachment 1 to the resolution, which I believe you all have. After that, is there any comments that any of my colleagues would like to make to this resolution? I should also add, we have, um, Acting Director Ms. Panucci here. In order to, if anybody has any questions, then I'll move to suspend. If we do not have any questions, then I will not move to suspend and I will just continue with the agenda. Okay, not seeing any. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosqueta?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The resolution is adopted and, um, the chair will sign it. And will the clerk please affix my signature to the resolution that we just passed? Moving on to item number seven, this is also mine. Madam Clerk, will you please read item seven into the record?
Agenda item seven, Resolution 32046, adopting the Seattle City Council 2022 Work Program.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution 32046. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta. It's been moved and seconded. As sponsor of this resolution, I will again address this item and then open up the floor to comments. So this resolution adopts the council's 2022 Work Program for Standing in Select Committees. The council adopts a work program annually. The work program is updated periodically throughout the year as circumstances and priorities change. Uh, we've been talking about this work plan, I believe, and, uh, standing in select committees since January. I want to thank all of you for getting all the information in. Big thank you to central staff, to Esther Handy and Ali Panucci and everybody involved. I know you had a ton of spreadsheets and, um, drafts and drafts and drafts and you guys got it done and I want to thank you for that. So are there any comments from my, yeah, thank you. I'm glad you're back on camera, Ms. Panucci. Are there any comments and anything that we want to share from our colleagues to, um, this resolution? Or again, thank, uh, central staff? Councilmember Mosqueta? Yes, no. Okay, so they're not. Will the clerk, uh, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution? Did you want to talk, Councilmember Mosqueta? No? Okay. Go ahead, go ahead. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosqueta?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted. The chair will sign it. And Madam Clerk, will you please affix my signature to the resolution? Before we go into other business, um, I like to call on Councilmember Mosqueta because she's always so kind and thanking everybody. So that's why I kind of pick on her a little bit because I like to hear her thank everybody. So now we're going to move on to other business. Is there any other business to come before council? Councilmember Mosqueta?
Thank you very much, Council President. Colleagues, I am going to be at the National League of Cities, um, meeting in mid-March. That goes from March 12th to March 15th. So I would like to be excused from council briefing on March 14th and full council on March 15th with your blessing.
So let's do Councilmember Mosqueta first. Just hold up, Councilmember Strauss. Is there any objection to Councilmember Mosqueta being excused from the dates that she just shared with us? Seeing no objection, hearing no objection, Councilmember Mosqueta is indeed excused. Councilmember Strauss?
Uh, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you and Councilmember Mosqueta. Thank you.
Oh, well, thank you too. Thank all of you. So with that, let, before we adjourn, colleagues, this does conclude our items of business today on, on our agenda. Our next regularly scheduled City Council meeting is on March 8th at 2 o'clock. I hope you all have a great afternoon. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Bye-bye.